All right, folks, thank you for joining us this evening. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting, having called this meeting to order on January the 26th, 2021. I'd like to ask if you would, join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for an invocation for council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, as we gather before you this evening, we are thankful for this opportunity. We're thankful as well for the calling that you have placed upon our lives to be here, to guide and direct the city of Greer. We thank you for what you're doing here and acknowledge your presence in what is going on not only locally but on the state and regional and national level as well. To, Lord, help remind us that, like a light on the hill, that your hand is indeed upon this nation and that for whatever we are worried about, this nation has survived under your direction and leadership. And so we ask tonight that you be with us in this meeting, that you will lead, guide, and direct us, that you will undergird us in such a way that we will understand the issues before us and that the plans that we make and decide on this evening would be pleasing in your sight and ask these things in Christ's name and for your sake. Amen. Ms. Duncan, do we have anybody to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
With that then, council, we will move to a period of time for special recognition. And I am going to ask Ms. Janice Fowler if she will come to the podium this evening. And then I'm also going to ask that Mr. Powers and Mr. Strange join me at the front right here if you would. We have a little recognition that we would like to make to you this evening.
You won't be here?
Wait right there for just a minute and then when I do come up, that'd be great. Come on, gentlemen, up here if you don't mind. How y'all doing, fellas? Good to see you. Y'all want to assume position on either side right here? That'd be great if you want to come in. I'm gonna ask Ms. Fowler if she would give a brief overview of Greer Housing Authority so that our audience will have a little background for what you do and what you gentlemen have been doing for the city.
Sure. The City of Greer Housing Authority serves the low-income population in Greer by providing housing. We provide housing through two programs, the Public Housing Program and the Section Eight Program. We assist 186 families on the Public Housing Program in Greer, and we assist up to 286 families in Greer on our Section Eight Program, six of those being dedicated to veterans in the Greer area. So the Public Housing is managed and directed by a board of five, and these two gentlemen have served and served us well over the last 20-plus years as a part of our board team. The board consists of members of the City of Greer, and so today we're here to recognize them for their service as they have retired from us. That's it?
Stand by for a minute. We're gonna have to do this in just a minute. Gentlemen, I've got a proclamation for each of you that I would like to read for our audience this evening. And this one says to Charles Strange, whereas Mr. Strange is a native of Greer, grew up in Hampton Road area, attended Central Health School, graduated from Greer High School in 1947, and dutifully served his country in the United States National Guard for 15 years. Whereas Mr. Strange married in 1958, wed with two children, Jim and Ron, Mr. Strange cherishes his family and subsequent generation, ten great grandchildren and two great-great-grandchildren. Whereas Mr. Strange started a career at the Lee Department of Children in Greer, serving teen-year-old working in the safety division, eventually promoted to the assistant manager, then working for North Greenville College, first built Silvermane, then eventually retired from the Department of Children. Whereas Mr. Strange faithfully served the housing authority, not a question of integrity, committed dedication, provided a solid voice of leadership in Greer and was eventually elected to the mission. Mr. Strange is the original resident of Stone Point Street Place and is always an active resident of Greer Housing Authority in Greer. Now, therefore, I would like to have you join me in honoring Charles Strange for his dedication to Greer community and serving above the residents by always lending and helping to create the Greer Housing Authority, respected state and City of Greer, and I'm gonna add his name as well. Please join me in graduating, Mr. Strange. That's gonna be a hard one to talk. I wish you made mine first. You've got a little everything. Glad to have you. But we also want to thank now Mr. Harold Flowers. Mr. Harold Flowers is also a native of Greer, exacting his career for the better of the church. Mr. Flowers, proud to serve our country in the United States Navy and enjoyed a long career with the Pennsylvania National Insurance Company, twenty-three years of experience. After Mr. Flowers attracted to taking the service in the community by serving on the Greer Housing Authority for a mission for twenty years and served as a chairman for fourteen years, Mr. Flowers served as community to the Greer Lions Club, Greer Community Ministry, and the Greer Recreation Commission. Flowers, recognized for his longstanding community service, loyalty to the public housing industry by the Paralympic Health Association, he developed a committee of initiatives of the United States of America, the Eagle Conference. I hereby would like to honor Harold Flowers for his dedication to our community, his vital leadership in helping to ensure the Greer Housing Authority's second financial position in Greer. Flowers, on behalf of Greer, you join me in inviting him to serve.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of Greer Housing Authority and our Greer Housing Authority Board, we would just like to present these plaques of appreciation, and we would just like to say thank you again for the service that you've provided to the Greer Housing Authority and the Greer community. We couldn't have done many of the things that we've done without you guys, so we do truly thank you, and you will be missed. You're already missed, but we thank you and we certainly appreciate you. Thank you.
We probably don't talk enough about our housing commission, and that's probably my fault for not inviting them to come and present before us more often than they do. But the work that they do in our community is invaluable. There's just no way for me to convey to you how helpful it is to have a housing authority in a town or a city the size of Greer. And not only that, but also the work that they do. This provides something for our citizens that is often handled at a much higher and more distant level, and we all know how complicated that can be sometimes. And I have never run into an instance where I have called Ms. Fowler or her staff to inquire about a situation or a particular situation and not gotten the kind of straight-up answer and information that I needed. And their task is Herculean. They obviously have more requests than they can accommodate on a day-to-day basis, and it often does lead to waiting lists. But thank God that they're there because that waiting list would be much longer if it wasn't, and people would be trying to deal with regulation agencies in either Greenville or Spartanburg. And this is just a real enhancement to our community and one that I'm afraid is undervalued sometimes because they keep their heads down over there and they go about their work and they get it done. And as you can tell from those two men that they're recognizing tonight, with that kind of spirit and that kind of attitude and that kind of dedication, there is no doubt that they are putting people in homes. And so I just wanted to thank them for what they do for the City of Greer. With that then, we will move to departmental reports, which I believe Mr. Merriman is going to give us just some brief overview in that regard, so I will move directly to the administrators' report. Mr. Merriman?
Thank you, Mr. Merriman. Yes, ordinarily, we would have a budget presentation for you to cover the month of December today, but what I've asked, invited us to do is do December and January and our second meeting in February, just to maintain a consistent second meeting in the month process. But of course, like anything else, if you do want any of the updated information, we're always available to provide you whatever you need. So rolling into the next issue, and I guess I probably shouldn't have done that in the first place, the budget calendar. We are getting to that time of year where we begin the budget process. And so, as I've let you all know, but I'd like to remind everybody that February 19th is our day-long council budget retreat. You'll have the opportunity to hear from your department heads on kind of a year in review and then to outline some of their budgetary priorities for the next year, and then we will spend the afternoon parsing out some of the finer details of those things. So that is February 19th. The next, obviously, there's some administrative things we're gonna do between then and the May 18th scheduled workshop. So this will be a council budget workshop, May 18th, with the intended May 25th first reading and a June 8th second reading. Of course, all of those things are flexible, but that is the calendar that I'm proposing for you. Now, we will make sure that you have an email with all of those dates so you're prepared. The next item is the noise ordinance. We spent some time at the last council meeting discussing the noise ordinance. We came back as a staff, and what we've decided to do is make construction hours a portion of or a requirement of a building permit. So we're gonna set those construction hours to begin no sooner than 6:00 a.m. and end no later than 9:00. So from 6:00 to 9:00 will be the construction hours that we're gonna allow, and it will be part of the building permit. So when they pull a permit, they understand that those are the hours. It's gonna be a complaint-based response, and if we get a complaint for someone beginning before that 6:00 a.m. period or after that 9:00 p.m. period, we will be empowered to issue a stop work order until they can become compliant.
Seven days?
Yeah, this will be, the permit, yes, sir, it will be for that time. So that is, as I indicated to you, I think what we were trying to avoid is an ordinance at this time just because of the complexities that are inherent in a noise ordinance, but if that doesn't work, we will come back and we'll start over. We'll make sure we get this thing resolved. Okay? So that's our path forward as of now on the noise issue. The next item is Blue Ridge Plantation. If you've not been up there, I would ask you possibly to drive through and see some of the work that the newer developers doing out there. Staff has been meeting with them. They've been doing a fantastic job bringing those punch list items that we had talked about up to standards. Spine road has been paved. They've been doing a number of storm drainage-type work, sidewalk repairs, et cetera. We will begin issuing a limited amount of permits to the builders out there so they can continue working out there, but we're gonna monitor and continue to make sure that those infrastructure improvements that we have required will get done. So I'm as pleased with the effort so far as I can be, and I think we've got a great partnership moving forward. And the last thing, if you'll indulge me, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna ask Chief Flowers to come up and he'll handle the last item of the administrators.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Can you believe it's been almost six years? I can't believe it. There's a lot changed in six years.
You've been here six years?
Almost. April will be six years, believe it or not. So, yeah. So, yeah, a lot of things have changed. I'm sure some of it you've noticed, some of it you may not have noticed. And then, you know, we've talked about several times ISO and accreditation and improvements that we've got in the works, that kind of stuff. And you kind of know my philosophy behind ISO, right? It's one of those things where we strive for the best we can do, but we're really striving to improve our process, not necessarily striving for a specific ISO rating. And those of you probably know that currently our ISO rating is a Class II. And more specifically behind that is it's 81.02 points. What that means is basically the cutoff between a two and a three is an 80. So that's kind of where that falls. I am very happy to announce to you tonight that we have improved that score. So instead of 81.02, we have now gone to 92.08, which means that we are now going to be a Class I effective May 1st. So I do apologize for throwing that on you at the last minute, but we felt like it was a good idea to get it in front of you as soon as we could. We literally got the information yesterday morning, and we'll get some more information out to you at a later time with some numbers.
So on your budget, we gonna see ostensibly for the trucks?
No, sir. Not unless you tell me otherwise. No, sir. That's right. That's right.
Chief, how many departments have a Class I designation in the state?
Okay, so let's actually start at the national level. So ISO grades approximately 40,000 fire departments nationwide. Out of that, there is 388, us being one of those, that is Class I, which accounts for 0.97% of the overall number. In the state of South Carolina, there's approximately 539 departments that they grade, and out of that, we are one of 29.
Wow. When you send out the information, could you give us a kind of a Cliff Notes sketch of what you did to bring it up?
Well, I'll be happy to give you kind of an idea of what we've done. Yes, sir. I'll be very honest with you, that is not me. That is our staff with obviously your support. You know, but a lot of it really is just changing internal processes and things like that. I told you when I came here, I wasn't gonna come in and ask for a bunch of money to be able to try to chase a one. But there were a lot of things during that first few months that I was evaluating everything that I noticed that we could make some improvements on. And to kind of give you an idea, I mean, obviously, you heard the overall number, so it's a little over 11-point increase. And we are within a couple points of completely topping out. So the way it works is ISO is split up into the Fire Department section, which counts for 50 points, and then the Water section counts for 40, and then you've got 10 for Communications, and they give you bonus points for your community risk reduction processes. And so out of that, we almost topped out in the Fire Department section as well as Communications, as well as the community risk reduction programs. The only area that we need to improve on a little bit is on the water side, which is not in our direct control. So, yes, sir, we will provide that information a little bit more detail for you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Congratulations to you and to your staff. I'm not surprised, and as long as I've done this, I've noticed a lot of departments will chase a one and end up taxing their citizens more to get to the one than the savings rate that they would see on their insurance. It's kind of, it ends up becoming more of an ego trip than anything, but I think the way our Fire Department has done it has been smart through processes and efficiency. So my hat's off to you and your guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes my call.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question about the permit.
Sure.
What if there are instances where weather, what conditions dictate that construction needs to begin before 6:00 or continue after 9:00?
I think if there's some sort of force majeure issue, if we've had significant storm damage or something along those lines, that our Building and Development Services Department can contact with permit holders and authorize them to work outside of that set period of time, given some level of calamity, I think it's probably the best way of putting it. So as of now, those work hours will be established between 6:00 and 9:00, barring any sort of necessity that necessitate starting before 6:00 or working at 9:00.
And they would simply need to cut that bill?
Yes.
We are, we're gonna move back up the page here and take care of the minutes of the council meeting from January the 12th. Before we do that, I want to acknowledge the chief in the presentation that was just made. As you can tell, humility is one of his strong suits. And I find it both interesting and enlightening that he indeed told us when he came here that he was not coming here to chase a ISO I, but that he was coming here to create apartment that would be worthy of an ISO I. And thank you, Chief, for those efforts and for what you've done in that regard. Even before we had that official recognition, I would have put our Fire Department and our men and women in that department up against any other department around here. I live close enough to that building that I know every time they leave that building, and it is a 24/7 business that they operate over there. And to be able to be on-call 24/7 and do the kind of training and the kind of updates and do the things that they do requires a huge amount of leadership, and my hat is off to that staff and to our firemen. And so please convey to our firefighters the appreciation of this council and congratulations for that accomplishment. With that then, I'll entertain a motion to receive the minutes from the January 12th, 2021, meeting.
Swim move.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Downer?
Yes. Terms of appointments to boards and commissions, the Recreation Association Board of Trustees has an opening in District 5. Mr. Bettis, I believe you've got information to bring us in regard this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think everyone has a copy of the biographical sketch for Melissa Paget-Smith. She's a resident of my district, and she and her husband have children that participate in our programs, and she comes with a strong recommendation from our recreation staff and actually a former Recreation Board member, and she is excited about taking up the challenge. So I'd like to place her name and nomination.
Great. You have that information before you. Any questions, comments for Mr. Bettis or council in regards to appointing Melissa Paget-Smith to the Recreation Association? I'll need, as it comes, as a motion, I do need a second. Floor's open for discussion or questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Downer?
Yes. Council, let's move to the first item of old business this evening. It's the first reading of ordinance number 65-2020. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Linda Smith located at 3700 Brushy Creek Road from C2 Commercial to RM2 Multifamily. Mr. Matt Mahan joins us this evening. New or additional information in regards to first reading ordinance 65-2020?
Yes, sir. At your decent R.A.F. meeting, y'all tabled this to get some more information for some elevations, potential parking layout, and all of that. So I have that for you tonight. Just a quick overview, this is the current zoning. It is C2. Future land use map at the time showed this as residential land use 3, so that does allow for multifamily. These are the current pictures. I went out the other day and got some elevations for y'all out there. So the elevations will not change for the exterior. The applicant is just requesting to do interior work only. This is the proposed parking layout. He'll have two parking spaces in the front, a driveway going back, and then two kind of behind the building. There is a cinder block wall that will have to come down for him to be able to get that driveway in. He is also proposing some landscape timbers kind of along the creek area for a buffer so you're not hopefully dropping into that. And these are the proposed floor plan layouts. It's gonna be basically a studio apartment, and that is all the information that I have, sir. But I will be happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Thank you, sir. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Swim move.
Second. Floor's open for discussion.
So you said basically the exterior is not gonna change?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
I am not sure. I don't have it clear in my mind that this is, although it's residential, it's hard to see it as residential where it is. I don't know that it's, I guess I'm trying to say I don't know if it's compatible with the area, although it is residential.
is residential. But it's, it's one, I guess, one bedroom, which I believe there should be one bedroom living units in that area.
What happens on the bottom floor? And I see that there's, there's a layout here, but it's, the bottom floor is currently not being used for residential. So what would be the requirements for that? Is this like going to be like a total gut situation and everything has to be brought up to code? Or what actually changes on all that?
They'll have to submit plans to actually bring everything up. It will have to, you know, meet the requirements of the IRC International Residential Code to be brought up. It's basically a 20 by 20. It's just going to be a, you know, a kitchen, studio apartment is what they're proposing.
Do we know if that's even possible, for instance, on the bottom floor? I mean, isn't there some type of minimum height requirement or something like that in the basement for it to be code?
I may defer to Ms. Helms on, on technical questions.
Well, if... Did I see her come in? Would you join us one second because I do have a question as well, too? Because again, my understanding would be these, you know, I think it's liberal to describe them as a one-bedroom, since I don't see any type of closet or any, I mean, it looks like your bed's going to be part of your kitchen bathroom thing here. So we may need to, to get some more information in regards to what qualifies as a, as a residence and what doesn't. If you could help us on that, please.
Yes, so you are correct. It would have to meet the minimum headroom for the bottom floor. And because it would be a change of occupancy, everything would need to be brought up to code, including the energy, the insulation. And there is a provision in the code that would allow for like a micro apartment for an open floor plan that this may qualify for. I haven't really studied it, but they would have to submit the plans and bring everything up to code with it being a change of occupancy.
So is it possible to have a, a residence with no exit except for one door? Does it-
They would have to have a window for a means of egress out of the bedroom. And only one exit door is technically required for residential dwelling. And then they would have to do a fire separation between the bottom floor and the separate floor. And all of the bottom floor load-bearing walls would need to be fire-rated and protected as well.
This may end up being cheaper to tear it out and rebuild after, after all that.
Possibly.
Any other questions of Ms. Helms?
You say check the mark. See what point you need to say.
It's going from commercial to residential. The last use there, I believe, was a hot dog stand.
So it's most likely because of what?
Because of the life safety. Yes, sir.
Others? Ms. Helms? Thank you, ma'am. Sir, would you like to come forward, please? I, I think it might be beneficial to, to get some information from you as well, too. If, if you would, please identify yourself for a matter of the record. And, and if you could give us some additional insight possibly into what you hope to do with this, this structure?
Yes, sir. My name is Nathan Koppenen. I don't currently own the property and I'm looking to purchase it, but the only way I would purchase is if, if I'm able to actually turn this into, I'm calling it a duplex, but what it is, is the first floor and the bottom floor, they're exactly the same size. Like you said, it was a 20 by 20. And it is going to be a studio apartment, which, but there, there is not a separate bedroom. It is like the kid, so the bathroom is the only thing that has the walls that separate. And then it, it is the, the kitchen and the bed. And what we'll, what we'll do is we're going to do more like a, like an IKEA type of a closet system. So that's why there isn't closet walls in there. And so it'd just be basically a, you know, two studio apartments.
Is there access from the first floor going into the basement?
No. No, you have to, you have to access that from, only from downstairs. It's a, there's already a, a door, a 3O door there already. There's already windows that are there. There's two windows on the, on the basement floor. The height is already, it's an eight-foot, they're eight-foot ceilings down there, but they are egress windows. There's two egress windows down there.
In the basement?
In the basement part, yeah.
Is, is there a separate heating and cooling system for the basement?
Well, that, yeah, that, not right now.
Not right now.
But that's, that's what we would upgrade to. Is each, each unit would have its own, or yeah, each unit would have its own heating and cooling system. As well as, as well as the meters, the power meters, we're going to put up an actual, it's, it's a two-meter base system.
Questions, council?
What is your, what do you hope as far as the rent, monthly rent? What are you thinking that these units will bring?
I'm thinking that we're going to be around 950 a month.
For the total building or for each unit?
No, no, each unit. Yep.
Others?
I stayed in place smaller.
Yeah, but you, you were in college. Mr. Koppenen, thank you for coming this evening. We appreciate the additional information.
All right. Should I stay or am I-
No, you may want to hang around for a vote. Yeah, this is the second reading.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yep.
No, first reading. First reading under old business.
Yes.
First reading. Okay. It's coming for, excuse me, it's coming for first reading. We held it over.
So regardless, you, you following what we're doing, Ms. Koppenen? You're getting first reading right now, but it's not the final vote tonight.
Thank you for the clarity. I think there's other questions about the project, Mr. Matt Mahan. Okay. Are those the only views that we've got? We don't have where the proposed parking is, is supposed to go.
We would, this is the-
I see the layout, yeah.
What's the total square footage? 400 persons left?
Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
No.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
No. Passes 4-3 on first reading. Thank you, sir. Mr. Koppenen passes 4-3 on first reading. Uh, council, hold on one second. I've got the windows open here. Let me see if I can get back to where we were. All right. All right, let's go to items of new business. This evening, we have the consideration of the purchase of equipment, golf course equipment for maintenance operations. Parks and Recreation Department is requesting approval to purchase equipment to support maintenance operations for the Greer City Golf Course. Mr. Watson, are you with us this evening?
Mr. Mayor, stop and make-
This is a staff issue?
Okay. Yes, sir. This is a budgeted item for, out of our lease purchase fund, Fund 10 in Parks and Recreation. This is, it was a bid item. Parks and Rec is requesting and administration is recommending the purchase of the mowers for a total of $180,959.51 to Smith Turf Irrigation. These are Toro products.
Comes as a recommendation from staff. Do I hear a motion to receive?
Swim move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Floor's open for discussion.
How does this compare with the budget, the budgeted amount?
The budget amount, I don't know if the budget amount is all, it's, it's, it falls under the amount we had originally budgeted for this act, and they work a little bit.
Other questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, we have one item for executive session. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn for, that we go into executives, excuse me, we go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss an economic development matter pertaining to Project O'Hare as allowed by state statute section 30-4785.
Comes as a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. For those of you that have joined us this evening, we do have a workshop that is stated that is following the council meeting. While we will meeting here for executive session, and I will ask that the audience step outside, we will reconvene for a workshop after the executive session. Executive session is in regards to economic development matters. I don't intend there will be any action in that regard this evening, as far as I know has been stated. So with that, if you came this evening for a matter of business, thank you for joining us. Otherwise, if you'll step into the lobby, we'll let you know when we're finished with executive session.